Why don't you say it today?
Call this meeting to order. All rise for the political allegiance.
I would like to do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since I seem to be the biggest offender of making sure your phones turned off, please make sure your phones are silenced and quieted. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting? If so, are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Who's the second?
Second.
Second motion. The second, any further comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Mail? In Kirkwood, says she had something.
I passed out to council this evening, a letter that was sent to me yesterday from Centerstone. They are reminding the county about the annual giving, that according to their calculations, they're using the 2.6% road quotient provided by the Department of Local Government Finance, and they're requesting their annual donation of $150,634.80. However, as council knows from the budget hearings, that the commissioners have appropriated out of the added monies, $85,000 towards this, but I wanted council to be aware of the request and what actually has been appropriated in the budgets for this. So with council's approval, that's what we're going to move forward on, and I'll provide a letter and write it to Centerstone. That's council's privilege or prerogative.
Any comments?
Not right now.
Right after, yeah. Any questions? Yeah, we'll hold comment on that then.
Well, this is, this comes as kind of a surprise.
Exactly, yeah. I agree.
And quite a difference in the dollar amount within contributions, so I think it's gonna, I think some communication with people at Centerstone will be in order.
There's not going to be decision on this tonight. I don't think, my agreement, council? I don't think we can make any decision on this. We're talking, we're not talking $2,000, we're talking almost double.
Yeah, I see the table coming out. Later date.
Mr. Powell?
I don't believe I have anything that needs to be brought part of the council tonight, unless anyone has a specific question they think needs to be addressed.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Powell? Surely you probably don't have anything to report in your committee, do you? Dale, do you want to give a brief update at all, or?
Well, Mike and Mark and I have, on the budget committee, we've, we've met a couple of times since last time we were together. There's still work to be done, and we're working on a few things, and really don't have a report ready to give you, so we'll just hold that off until we're all together in an official budget hearing meeting, and hopefully make some sort of recommendation or finding for you.
You establish a date chance, like we're going to be all back together?
No, we really haven't discussed that.
Okay.
We're, you know, we're into September now, so we've got to, we've got to get something, we've got to get this done this month, for sure.
Yep. Okay. We don't have a commissioner's representative here, do we? But we have the highway department here. Jay, were you going to talk about highway pricing for hot mix versus pug mix? Is that what you're here for?
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, you're, you're up. You're on deck.
Thank you.
As you can see by looking at the paper, when I figured this, I figured the man-hours, fuel costs involved in doing all this, plus the cost to chip seal on the road within three years after you do it. Because if you don't chip seal the pug mix road, you don't last. It falls apart within five years. Leroy can attest to that, because we've had roads that fall apart when I took over, that had been done and have not been touched. And if you look on the back of that paper, you see a quote from Powell Pavy, the quote where he is, initial where he changed the price for this year for us, to give us a better deal on it. And with hot mix, it's good for 10 years. It just makes more sense to me to use hot mix and start trying to remake the pugs and do that.
The price of the hot mix, Jay, that would be at the plant, so you'd have to pick it up and haul it back, right?
Yeah, we always pick it up and haul it off from, yeah. It'd be no different than us hauling from the garage down there to haul pug mix out.
So Jay, your first sheet here, is this, you're saying 61, 78 per ton?
Yeah.
And then the hot mix is?
57 for finish.
Okay, because I don't know, the number five, number eight, and number 11, is that?
The binder is, is what you put down to build the road with, and if you're just overlaying a road, the finish is what you want. To smooth the road out.
And you said the hot mix lasts 10 years?
Yeah.
And the pug?
I know the state seals theirs, but according to what they said in the paper, the only reason they sealed it is to seal the water out and to get better traction in the wintertime. That's exactly what they printed in the paper on.
So you're bringing this because Mark had some questions, correct?
Yeah, he thought, had some questions about my figures, and that's.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just see how you figured it.
I had everything in here, because I believe if you're going to compare, you need to put the labor hours and fuel costs. I mean, there could have been more cost to this, because you've got to figure two days setup for a machine to set it up, because where we're at, we have to keep it over the garage now, because they sold everything off of it over IMI, and then you got, most of the time, you just got four people on it, but I have seen where we've had five or six people out there trying to keep it going to get it done once we started. There's always something that goes on with it.
So Mark, what were your questions or concerns?
Well, I just had some figures that I ran, which I got from that Terry Asfall.
Yeah.
And then I called Powell also, and he gave me the 62, 25, and as he gave you a reduced rate. Is that reduced rate based on a certain number of tons that you're buying?
No, there was no limit on how much we could buy, because we haven't bought that much this year. I think we put down about 300 tons, maybe, because we had some spots that we needed to fix, and we wanted to fix them with that. We did some out on 550 East out there, on the north, northeast end of the county, because it was all broke up and these ways, we just laid it out with favor and went over it, and you're going to have to touch it now. And it patches the road. And we did a spot down on the scout river. They had a spot going up a hill, and it's ideal for a hill, because it'll stay on a hill when you put it on there.
What did you come up with numbers for Terry?
I don't have them with me right now. Terry was around $40 a ton. They have a, actually, they have a pug mill that they actually loaned out, they'll send, rent it out to counties, and it runs about, like I said, I don't have those figures with me here right now, but with the gravel and the oil, and it was based on, he based it on a 6,000 gallon tanker that he ran, and you got 65 a gallon.
We usually try to run 6,500 that way. You'd get about 540 ton out of that.
Right, and so they mixed it, they mixed it, what I remember is like 75% number 53s and, or number eights is like 25% when you add the mix.
We changed the mixture.
You know, the mixture can vary.
We got some mix from a place over Flat Rock where they make their own pug mix and run it through a hot mix plant, and it works in the wintertime and everything else. They use AE 300, and Terry didn't offer that, but it, it allows you to use it all the way up to about 40 degrees. You can still shovel. If you try to shovel that stuff in cold weather, that if you make it with a pug mill, you can ask Leroy. All it does is tear your shoulders up. You can't do nothing with it.
Probably tough.
Three surgeries to get it back.
Probably gets cold, there ain't no doubt, it gets stiff.
We, when we made the last batches of hand shoveling pug we made, we changed the mixture, and we used a finer stone to get like a finish, matte on it, and it worked pretty well, didn't it Leroy? But it just, it just cost effective, it wasn't compared to, we had to use, they had to go back and chip seal it anyway. It wasn't cost effective to use it that much.
Yeah, so all the hot mix you used this year so far has basically been repaired?
Yeah, just repaired.
Repair stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, and then any finished, any finished roads was all chipped and sealed so far?
Yeah, yeah, we did, almost 30 miles of chip seal road this year.
This year?
Yeah, and we actually did a couple today.
Are you done for the year, or you got?
Yeah, yeah, we're pretty much depleted our bifumulus money. We've got some for patch machines, and that's about it.
Okay.
If we'd had a little more, we'd drive more pavement, but we just didn't have enough there, with they trying to get all the chips on fixed the roads that needed overlays and tried to save.
Okay, alright.
Forgive my ignorance, but why are we asking? I honestly don't know. Are we, are you advocating more hot mix versus pug mix?
No, no, I just, they had a cost, and I was wanting to see how they, when I made my phone calls to Terry Asfall and to Powell, I came up with different figures, and I wanted to see how Jay got his figures here, and that's what he does.
We're actually getting our oil for this stuff to Marathon, because Terry didn't even put a bid in this year for Richmond. I don't understand why, but they did.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Are you at liberty to say how Richard's doing?
He should, he's going to come back tomorrow and ride and get caught up on what's going on, so he'll be in, he won't stay the whole day, but he'll be back Thursday.
Send him our best.
He was supposed to be here tonight, but I don't think he's up to it yet.
Okay, well, send him our best.
Okay.
Thanks. You have no old business?
Going home.
Go get your macaroni and cheese and hot dogs, Jay. You have no new business, additional, County General Coroner, I thought I saw her walk in. Hi, Vicki, how you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm once again requesting funds for autopsies. Five autopsies need paid for. That brings us up to about 16 this year. And then, since I've turned in the request for this amount, or just two more come up, so I'll be seeing you again.
So this one gets you through the, this one gets you through the year?
Is this okay for the five that I have pending right now? I have two more come, and unfortunately, they were in funds, so hopefully we'll go, so.
As unfortunate as it is, there's nothing we can do about that, is there?
No, and I wish it were more predictable. I mean, it's just very fluid. We can go along a stretch, and, but then, then it just hits us really hard, but there's just no predictability to it. No, if there were, that would be one thing, but just not.
Vicki, were these all ordered by you, or was it family members or combination?
Oh, no, what we pay for, I order, or request.
Well, I know that, but.
Yes, no, I, they, it all has to go through me.
Minutes.
So, you know, if a family requests one, then it's up to them to pay for it if I don't see the need for one. First of all, I decide. If one is not required, or as far as we are concerned, then it can't be paid for by anyone.
Mike, I'll make a motion for $4,100.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the $4,100 for the coroner's office? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes, ahs, and a motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Next up, the sheriff for postage. United State Department for your 144, too.
The postage, we haven't asked for postage in two years, according to secretary that was taken out of the budget a few years ago. Got by, we have a lot of mail, obviously, with all the civil process going through. This request is for 50 rolls, $49 a roll, so that should get us by for, I would guess, a few years, so maybe two years till we have to come back, hopefully. There is, some of that is also the indigent inmates. If they are indigent, we do have to provide them a minimal amount of stamps for correspondence, so. Any questions?
Sheriff, why, your department's never used the postage machine in the coroner's?
Not to my knowledge, not since I've been in office. So, we did have a postage machine over there. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not sure why we don't use it anymore, but I know they stopped at some point last year using it, so.
Do they still have it?
I don't believe it's still there. If it is, it's in a closet, it might be in Ruth's closet, but we don't use it anymore.
How much would you need to get you through the year?
I would guess, if we could get half of that, that would, I, I would be comfortable with through the end of the year, but I would guess that would, that would last us a little bit longer, but.
Because I'd be curious as to what happened to the postage machine and?
Yeah, and I can check into that, and, like I said, I forgot we even had it. I didn't have a lot of postage that I did as a detective, so.
I mean, I could just see stamps being lost, or?
Sure, sure, yeah, I can.
Postage machine, you can't really lose that.
Right.
Well, you have, but.
Yeah, and it may be to the, due to the volume that we have going out, I don't know if that's the issue or not, but I can find out, but if we can get enough to get to it at the end of the year, I can have you guys an answer for that.
If you get your crack detective Billy Wacey?
Yes, yes.
Well, and I think, you know, there's, there are other benefits to having a postage machine. If, like, for instance, if you were going to get a new one in, maybe it'd bring you a machine that would also be a scales, to make sure you have the right amount of postage on it, and there's some tracking feasibility that tells you how much you used between X and Y time, whereas?
I'm sending a text now, so I'm going to try to drag this out long enough till I get it. I wasn't trying to be rude, I didn't want you to think I was asking what was for supper at all.
I, I know that you are.
Well, I am too, but two birds with one stone, Mike. But well, if we put that one to the side, I have the 144s, and also have the Cume jail that was in too, right? Okay.
Two of them.
I thought it was, yes. The Cume jail, and just asking for money out of Cume jail to be placed in the Cume jail repair, the amount is $6,000, that is various plumbing, we've done some painting over there as well. We have state jail inspector coming September 21st to do our annual tour of the jail, and some of the issues are some graffiti in the blocks, some gang signs, that every time I call the Sheriff's Association attorney, he asks, have you taken care of that yet? We have got some down, some up renewed, some not so nice stuff about me and various people, but we're trying to paint over some of that too. But that's just everything that comes out of the jail repairs. A lot of that is plumbing. Bill Gray and Jeff got called down last night because they had flushed a whole roll of paper towels down and completely clogged everything up in the block, so they were down last night. They were able to do it without having to call Templeton's, but a lot of these requires us to call Templeton or Powell's in to take care of some of the plumbing issues, so.
What kind of things are they saying about you?
Not so, not so nice. Nothing about me being handsome, or nothing.
And following up, as I prepare the resolutions for these additional and transfer requests, and the sheriff is probably aware of the situation with this particular Cume building jail budget, but in our budget preparation meeting with our DLGF representative, he pointed out that this fund is getting pretty low as far as its depletion point. As far as the appropriations for this year, there's only $1,932 left in this fund, which is why the sheriff's asking for this additional, because as of today's date, there's $9,928 left. So this, these next two additionals that are approved will take the fund down to about $3,100, and I just needed to make council aware of where the fund balance currently stands.
And since I'm here and I can knock on wood, we do have good news about the population in the jail, and that's, a lot of these issues are related to the population. We're down to 132, and since it's a state to want air, three more leaving tomorrow, so we will be under 130 for the first time since I've been sheriff, so some good news. And obviously, the more population is where these stupid issues pop up, where they, you know, cause plumbing issues, very seldom are the plumbing issues just standard maintenance, it's something stupid that they've done because they're mad over something, so.
Sheriff, what are we going to do with things like this? We're going to run the Cume, the Cume fund out of money. What are we going to do? What are we going to get the money for the rest of the year if this sort of thing keeps happening?
I would, the 6,000, I think is going to take us to the end of the year. I mean, I, barring a catastrophe or something bad happening, this should get us through to the end of the year. Past that point, have to see whatever's set aside next year, but this, this will get, I'm pretty sure the 6,000 will get us through the end of the year.
I hope so.
Yeah. We had showmalls came, the 29,000, 20 was put in for showmalls, and then 29 was taken out, so, to pay for the roof, the finishing of the roof, so there is a big expense that hopefully we won't.
Yes, and we still haven't addressed the issue of the air handling situation over there.
Yeah, Bill, I talked to Bill about this morning, and there's, and I know he talked to the commissioners this morning, and still trying to figure out what's going on with that, so, but that's, that is an issue, so.
I'll make a proof of the $6,000 Cume jail. I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the $6,000 for the Cume jail fund. And a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes, ahs, and a motion carries.
And with the 144s, we did have two positions that came open.
Excuse me, Sheriff, before you move on, we had to split the two additionals, so you could present a second one regarding?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The postage, according to, I texted Beth, and Beth's saying, I said, why aren't we using the postage machine anymore? She said, the council took it out. So, and I said, the machine? She said, no, they took postage out of the budget. So obviously, the texting conversation is, we're not on the same page there, so I'll find out, have an answer for you guys, so. If we can, if we can get something to get us through, if we can get half of that to get us through to the end of the year, I don't have a problem coming back next month or to get us through, but I know we're, we're about out. With what we have, this like civil process and things we send to other counties, as far as different cases, things like that, we're going to have to have something, so.
Joe, I don't think on civil process, you're talking about like lawsuit papers and stuff?
Yeah, and a lot of that's door and mail. If people aren't home, we have to, we have to send, we have to mail them a copy of that, so, and a lot of people aren't so anxious to answer the door when we?
Does that have to be registered or certified when you send it to them?
Not everything, depending on what it is. If it's no contact or anything like, those have to be served in person, so that's not something, but anything out is door mail, and then we'll let the people know that whoever is suing them, whatever, we'll let them know, this is the contact we had with them, and they'll either follow up, or sometimes it may be a bad address, or?
Well, those civil papers, don't they collect a fee up in the clerk's office for that?
Yeah, that goes to, towards our retirement. It used to be $13, they changed that July 1st to $25, but I don't know that that can be used for that. If it can, something we can look into, we were discussing that earlier, but they did, they did change that July 1st, so. Back to the postage, I don't know what you guys want to do, like I said, I can?
I can, I'll make a motion for half of it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve half, and second it, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes, ahs, and a motion carries.
Back to the 144, my fault. We did have one individual that resigned, and we had to let another individual go. Two positions became available, one was a male and one was a female. The male that? The male that we decided to hire in place of Verandis Watkins is Douglas Rader. Doug is a, has a bachelor's degree, was working up at IU East, was going through their academy, had some health issues, had to drop out of their academy, but excellent young man, I probably had more compliments on hiring him, and he just started Monday than, than anybody I've hired so far, so. And he is the only recipient of the Indiana Sheriff's Association scholarship, to our knowledge, in the history of Fayette County, so very good young man, seemed to be taking to it very well, very intelligent, so hoping things work out for Doug. And then, second person that we hired is Joanne Coyle. Joanne will be replacing Caitlin Levi. Joanne is a, lives out in Everton area, has foster children, very nice lady, she's taken to it, she loves the job, has asked me every day, I think since she started for a hat, so she really, really enjoys working over there, and seems to be fitting in very well. So both Fayette County residents and high look to, I think they're going to be excellent hires, so.
Mike, I'll make a motion that we give part of the two.
You have a motion to hire the two jail officers?
I second.
You have a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes, ahs, and a motion carries.
Just to clarify, the last text I got on the machine was, we got rid of the machine, and that was under Frank's administration. I seem to think we were using it, it hasn't been that long ago, so it's a miscommunication there, but I'll have an answer for you guys on that next month.
Okay, let's go back to the exterminator.
There were two separate additionals, one for the 6,100 for the exterminator, and other contracts for $764. Would you like to see it?
Yeah, sure, I don't have that. Okay, yeah, the, this is, we've been, and I don't even want to tell you, I was told this morning that's going on over there after the meeting, maybe, text you guys later, but we're having, obviously having issues over there, bed bugs is an issue. but we're having, obviously have an issues over there, bed bugs is an issue. The 50 a month, or 50 times each year, that's just the routine, them coming and spraying. That has helped and kept us under control. Restaurant system service, I'm not aware of what that is. Obviously, the sprinkler inspection has to be done, but I'm not sure about the restaurant system service. Obviously, has to be something in the jail, but... The 50, the $50 that we're paying for them to come in routinely spraying is, to me, is, they're getting a pretty good cost, or a pretty good price on that, because when those, when that outbreak happens and those bed bugs, the work that it entails, and the heebie-jeebies everybody gets when they go home because they've been in there around the inmates, and we have to go, and we have to bag up their mats, put them in the basement, it's, it's a mess. So the routine spraying is definitely something that we have to stay on, and it's a good price.
I need to approve the $764 for the first exterminating and the sprinkler and restaurant inspections.
I wanted to hear him tell about the bugs.
No, it doesn't involve bugs.
I'll second it.
It involves other things.
And motion to approve, is we second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Aye, as I have, a motion carries.
Thank you.
Joey, one more quick question before you go. You told us, but I may have missed it. Doug Rader was replaced, what individual?
He replaced Verandis Watkins.
Thank you.
He decided to leave on his two weeks' notice.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
Thanks, Sheriff. What's this with the highway department?
It's a transfer that they submitted, and I guess Jay left.
So we'll table it. Table it.
He does this just about every year.
Well, and in all fairness, if council will notice on the transfer, it was signed by Richard Corn, because there were several days that Richard did work prior to his leave. So Richard submitted this, and he must not have talked to Jay Havland about this coming before council on tonight's calendar, so I just wanted to point that out as a, I don't know, whatever you want.
Council, it's up to you, if you just want to approve it, if you want to make someone come back, if you can table it.
I'll put it on the agenda for the October meeting.
Kathy, you're up.
It's just a, it's a 144, and I know it asked to, wrote an individual to a second deputy, and, and at this time, there were some circumstances that developed that I'd like to, well, it's determined, just to bring her back to an employee and to remove the second deputy designation and the level three certification.
Kathy, do you want us to go ahead and approve this 144 tonight, or do you want to, you don't have a vacancy yet, you're not absolutely sure you will have, are you?
If there, you know, if we do, if we won't be able to fill it, because it's just, that position, eventually, the way the funding is going, it could possibly be, we won't have funds to fund another position, to continue funding that position. Just sitting down from the figures that we have, I mean, we have, we'd be okay through 16, maybe 17, but if, you know, you save up for contract and other expenses, it's a possibility that there won't be enough funds to continue to have a person in the reassessment fund. Because we have a secretary and a part-time person and a P-Boa, and we have to have a P-Boa by state. So I don't know right now, I just kind of have to wait to see how the future goes with that. Most likely, we're usually in vacancies.
Well, this, this is for an employee that you anticipate might leave.
Yes.
But you're not sure.
Not sure.
We can, we can, we can go ahead and approve this, and you'll be all ready, set, go, or we can postpone it until that employee leaves. I don't want to give your employee the impression we're handing them their hat.
Oh, no, okay. Well, I know it was on the agenda, and this is just something that came up rather quickly, unexpectedly, and so if you would want to, we could do that. You suggest we tangle it then?
That's, that's, I'll defer to your judgment on that. We can, we can postpone it, or we can, we can approve it, and, but you know, you understand what I'm saying about, you don't want to act like we're rushing someone.
Oh, no, no, I had put this forward. Just go ahead and approve it then, at this point?
Well, it's actually a preference.
I'll move to approve the 144 for the assessor's office. No second? Have a motion to approve and seconded the 144, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Aye, as I have, a motion carries. Patron concerns? Do you have patron concerns, Mr. Parker? Did you want to approach them later?
I am somewhat of a patron. It has been a while since I spoke to you, notwithstanding the budget meeting the other day, but I just wanted to let you know, and I think I mentioned it at that time, that we are one of 3,144 counties in the United States. And with those 3,144 counties in the United States, all of those counties are desirous of a stand, or a Houghton Roots, or a Sapa, or a Wazana. They would all like to have what we currently have in Fayette County. One of the key elements of my job beyond expansion and traction and new business is retention and retaining what we have. You'll recall, we had to run, Michigan made a run at us last year with, with stands. So I raised this issue to let you know that as we continue to market Fayette County, as we continue to sell the value of coming to our county to do business, we, as the Economic Development Group, are engaged in a program to retain what we already have. And I wanted you to know that. I guess the other thing I wanted you to know is, as we go about doing this, selling the assets of the county to those that are interested, it helps tremendously having your support. And I guess it's just a flowery way of saying thank you for your support, because your support has been huge in the last two years. Also, I think I mentioned this, commissioners, you see this, this paper in Connersville with the best tasting water for the third time, and Daryl Smith, thank you very much for this very nice article. It seems like Daryl has the ability to always get the stories of Connersville's best, and Connersville's, as we have the things to brag about. So I don't know why, if that's a plan, but thank you, Daryl, for, for this great story about the water. And that is one of the things that I am selling, and I'll do that this month in New Jersey and in New York regarding our water. Love to attract a beverage company to cash in on this best tasting water, and we have a huge capacity to sell water. And that's all the patron concerns I have. I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate, and the Economic Development Group appreciates, your support of our endeavors. If you have any questions for me?
Has city offered you any more money?
The city has not, Jim. They have not. And I'm not calling anybody out, but they have not contributed any money, with the exception of paying travel for the ACT academies that I did attend. Mayor did pay that out of one of his funds. Might have been all told $3,000. But beyond that...
We haven't paid anybody for the last couple of years, have we?
Exactly right. Since the financial emergency was announced the very week I came to work, you can't script this stuff, you know? The very week I came to work is when they announced the financial emergency. And we, we, we put them in our budget, and we show them, but we, and we send the bills, but we don't get any money.
Have you had a chance to talk to any of the new mayor?
I have.
Or did they look positive?
I've talked all three of the candidates. And I'm not throwing any of them under the bus, they're all a little iffy, because they really don't know what they're getting into. I mean, if you're coming out of a financial emergency, now you're the new mayor of a city that had that financial emergency, you're certainly going to want, you know, start on a positive note. But I have, I've spoke to all three of them about the importance of supporting economic development. It is our future, whether I'm in that chair or another director's in that chair, it is so important. As I go to the other counties and go to these associations and see how well they're funded, how many people on their staff, how many trips they make, they are, they are very well-funded. And they do, they do more, they do more than us, and a lot of this is limitation of funds.
What upset me, if they have a real special pet project, they always come up wanting money for it. That's enough saying, I'll be quiet.
Jan, I heard, and totally rumor, I haven't read anything, but maybe you can say that there was a new company that, a new manufacturing concern that selected Anderson, I can't even, but it was three letters was in the name, and just curious if you can share the information about that, were we under, were we being considered or not, did we not meet the qualifications?
I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware of that. The Economic Development Director, Ian Anderson, is one of the individuals, I'm going to New York, New Jersey, Rob Sparks, good guy. But, you know, we have a lot of these requests for information to come in through the state, some of them through the energy companies, and when, when we can, when we qualify, and sometimes I'll fudge, if they say within five miles of the interstate, I'll, I'll, I'll put that in.
Fudge a little.
Fudge a little, we're just a little short of that. Or if the building that we have are less than 30 years old, we have no buildings less than 30 years old, ceiling heights, loading docks, a lot of these qualifications knock us out of the box from the get-go. Having the, having the space, and we do have space, we, we have roughly 1,700,000 square feet, with some of the, about, with some of that pending on another deal that's in the works, which time will tell, and we'll, we'll know more in the future, but there's a lot of space in Connersville, manufacturing space, and also a lot of retail space, and we try to sell that as well. We've, we've had discussions on the old Kmart, the old Walmart, almost every building in Connersville. There are some small projects in process, but none that I would say are going to move the needle a lot. Of course, every job's important, you know? We get two or three here, and two or three there, that's better than losing, so... But I'm not aware of that particular thing.
Okay, well, it was in the news, and I don't know if it was in the newspaper, it was on the radio or TV news or whatever, but someone asked me specifically, and so I thought, well, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it, but I would ask.
There's been a bunch of RFIs come over the wire that we just did not have that. And the problem with fudging a little, if you put bad information and they call back, and then your credibility's shot, so I have to be very careful about, you know, I'll put a little asterisk, you know, you said five miles, we are actually 10.45 miles from the interstate. And that's of the northern, northern part of Fayette County, the industrial part, which is where most of the business would sell, or most of what we've offered is on that 58 acres that the city owns. Yes, Mark?
I got a question I don't want to put you on the spot.
Oh, go ahead.
But I just wanted to know what you think about the sports complex they're talking about.
Well, because you've asked me, I'll tell you. I think if you eliminate the sports complex ever being built for years into the future, and you look at only the land, and what fund that will pay for it, and the interest that that money is drawing today, it draws about $400 a year, the $600,000 in the remediation fund, that's where they plan on paying the bulk of that land price that's out of that fund, considering for 12 years, growing mold. John Baker's got a ruling and, and a court finding, or a court that said, "We could use that for a park, we could use that for it, the sports complex, if we so desire." The other advantage to that land is that it gives us river access, a public river access that we currently do not enjoy. I spoke to Dave Caldwell this morning, the water or soil guy, and he's just elated at the thoughts that we might have a public access to put canoes and kayaks into the, into the river. He says, "Every time you get a place where you get a public access, those parts of the river stay cleaner, there's less cleanup around, where good people doing good activities have a tendency to respect the river and not dump or litter." So he is, he is really interested in it. And I started to say, if, if the city bought that land and didn't do anything but continue to farm, at the, that would draw about $7,000 a year, where they're getting $400 on their, $400 a year on their money right now. So it would be a win for the city to acquire that land. A future complex would be great. If it didn't happen, it would certainly put money in the coffers and allow us public access to the river that we don't enjoy today.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Any other patron concerns? If not, we're taking a motion for adjournment.
All paid with sign. I thought that last one was a...
We'll sign it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.